City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. And my name is Ari Parker. I'm the mayor of Watsonville and we need to take a roll call.
Here.
Estrada?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Hurst?
President.
Montesino?
Here.
Quiros Carter?
Here.
And Parker?
Here. We don't need to motion to excuse any council members as we are all here. So we need to do the pledge of allegiance. So if you would please stand. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, information items. So we have in our report, a report of disbursements, some miscellaneous document reports, and written reports by council members regarding actions taken on their regional commissions, board meetings that may affect the city of Watsonville, Fannie. And at this time, we'll move on to presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to the council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live. We'll help you out if you're not sure, in order to obtain an accurate record for minutes. And at this time, we'll go to our city attorney for a report out of closed session.
Good evening, mayor and council members. A closed session was had and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. And we will go to the public. You have two minutes apiece. And if you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, please step to the podium.
Hello, Mayor Parker. I am one of your constituents, District 7, Steve Treheal, a member of the Board of Cabrillo Trustees. I come to you this evening because of two things. First of all, I would like to tell you that you have a very happy new resident of Watsonville. It's my sister. She could not get here this evening. She loves Watsonville. She's delighted to be at Long Beach and she, what she cannot get over about this city is the incredible friendliness of everybody. That includes everybody from the checker at Nob Hill, to the bus driver, to just about every, all her neighbors. So I want you to know from, from the point of view of my sister who's lived in Long Beach for 40 years, believe me, it's much better here. Life of quality is better here. The air is better. The environment, physical environment is better. The traffic congestion is nothing compared to the city of Long Beach. And if you've ever been there, then you know. And she wants to compliment, she asked me to compliment all of you, on being very hardworking and paying very close attention to the quality of life, because it really matters, folks. This coming Sunday afternoon, in front of the brewery next to Staff of Life, Sunday afternoon one, speaking of quality of life, will be a very important presentation. I think it's being hosted by Adam Scow, who ran against Panetta last time for the nomination for Congress, in dealing with toxic sprays. Now, you remember me a couple of years ago, and I insisted that we get rid of Roundup, and we did. Well, there's a lot more toxic spraying going on that we need to get rid of, and we need to make understand that needs to go. So I hope you'll attend, be there at 1:00 PM on Sunday. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak to a non-adjented item? All right.
Am I on? Yes. Thank you very much, Watsonville City Council. It's been a while since I've spoken here. My name is Daniel Dodge Jr., 618 Lincoln Street, lifelong resident of Watsonville. I didn't plan on speaking this evening, but I just wanted to say thank you, Watsonville Police Department. I'm pretty sure we've seen in the news that the SRO officer and the campus security, they were able to stop somebody from coming onto campus with a gun. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, Officer CJ and the classified workers in campus security. Thank you very much for protecting our campus and our neighborhood and our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good news. All right. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on something that is not on our agenda? All right, and seeing that we have none, we're going to move to oral communications from council. Councilwoman Quiros Carter.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, mayor.
Councilman Hurst?
Thank you very much, mayor, and welcome, everyone. It's great to see all the Wildcats here. You know, I did 30 years at Watsonville High. It took me a long time to get out of there, and so, you know, I look forward to coming back and visiting sometime. So it's great to see all of you folks here this evening. You know, we're, last week, we celebrated the retirement of Beatrice Flores for 35 years with the city, and that was a special event. We had a little cake for her and a goodbye send-off. And it was kind of scary today, seeing that her office was emptied out. And, you know, we're going to move forward, but it's going to be a transition. But it's a transition for everyone in the community every day in some respects. And we get to kind of refocus on what we really like about Watsonville and why Watsonville is a special place. And it's not just the weather, and it's not just the history, and it's not just the culture either, but it really is the people of Watsonville that make it a special spot. And so let's always thank each other for making Watsonville all it can be and all it should be. And so, welcome here this evening. I hope everyone survived the time change and that daylight savings stuff that goes on. And thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
First, I must apologize. For some reason, my iPad is not working, and so everything I wrote, I don't see. And I'm going to be 75 years old, and my brain, my memory doesn't work as well as it used to. So I'm just going to share a few things to summarize what I want to say. Many of us here in the, well, actually, council member Francisco and I are alum from UC Santa Cruz. And I know we have some staff that's alum from Santa Cruz, and I know we have many, many more in the community who are alum from UC Santa Cruz.
Graduate alum. Graduate alum.
Oh, you are too?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't know that. Good. Go banana slug. Slug. Anyway, councilmember Jimmy and I, last Friday, attended, it was called Journey, a Learning Tour at UC Santa Cruz. And there is five sessions that we attended. And of course, I'm not going to remember the name of the five sessions. But what it was after the tour, one of the things that it made me realize is that we, as a city of Watsonville, can really take advantage of all the resources that we have up at UC Santa Cruz, including jobs. And so I just wanted to report on that tour, and hopefully, councilmember Jimmy can add to, can add to it, because I don't remember. So thank you.
Councilwoman Estrada?
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick thank you to the community for coming out to today's meeting, and for those watching at home, thank you as well. In my very limited time that I have, I was actually able to attend quite a few community events with the entire family. So the Watsonville Film Festival was outstanding, again, as it is each year. Congratulations to Consuelo, and it's been a decade of the film festival. And just phenomenal night on Saturday night. So I know a couple of my colleagues were there, too. Congratulations to the new hospital board that was approved today, including our own Tony Nunez over here, who is a member. We wish you all the luck in the world, and please look towards the council for support or anything that we can do to help out. You know, we have a vested interest in making sure that that community hospital succeeds. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can root and center community wellness in that new hospital. So good luck to each member. The Cesar Chavez Awards are this Monday, being hosted by Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services. If you'd like to watch the event, it'll be online. You can go to the Friends website, and we'll provide more information. It is on Monday. Nick, could you remind me the time? We'll get the time.
It's at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
That's what I thought.
Great. So 6:00 PM. And finally, just a big thank you to Senderos, who invited me to be part of their Latino Role Model Conference. I was able to share my story along with a few other remarkable community members, and really, it was for the youth. And really, the message was to really follow your dreams. You'll have to work hard. There are a lot of trade-offs that you'll have to make, but if you put in the hard work, if you believe, if you keep the faith, and, you know, good things do happen. It takes a minute sometimes, but, you know, if you work hard, you can definitely achieve your dreams. So great conference to attend and to watch, and I had the honor just to meet Dolores Huerta, and on Monday, Dolores Huerta will be our key speaker for the Cesar Chavez Awards. Those are my updates, mayor.
Thank you. And it's 6:30 PM. There you go. Councilman Dutra?
Thank you. Also, Watsonville Wildcat. Good luck, you guys. How many of you are seniors? A lot of you? Oh, nice. Off. Well, congratulations on almost finishing. You're almost there. I went when, we didn't have the facilities that you guys have. We were in that old gym. That was our main gym. So I wanted to, I had a very busy schedule over the last couple of weeks as well. I put on a development meeting for the community that was over Zoom. I get a lot of questions on people knowing, well, why, why are there so many Starbucks? Why are we building this? Why are we building that? Why can't we do this? You know, and so I want to say thank you to Suzie Miriam. I don't know if she's out there. All of the staff that came, it's recorded. You can watch it. I had the privilege then, the next day, to go to PV High and talk to their government class, and this is, we discussed the issues that we discussed the night before in this meeting, because the students have the same questions as a lot of their parents, and their grandparents, and a lot of people in the community. So thank you so much for doing that. Also, thank you, Shannon Canoletio, for inviting me to the Little League opening day. I played for Salsi. It no longer exists, but National League. It's nice to see all the kids out there. There was Palace of Picture Day and tried to hit home runs, and it was a good time for all, for all. I also want to, I also joined the Omega Nu of Watsonville, the women of Omega Nu. They're raising, they raise funding for facilities and different things throughout our community. They put in the room at Dominican Hospital where, when the rape room, when people go, when women go in there and after being raped, they, it's a good place for, and a safe place for people, for women to go into, and they paid for that room to happen. So I don't know the exact name of the room, but I want to say thank you to them for all they do for our community. Ag Luncheon, I went to the Ag Luncheon with also councilmember Hurst, as well as, as well as councilmember Montesino. It was great to see everybody there. People are kind of getting back on the public. So thank you, everybody, for being out and doing your part of our community. Thanks so much.
Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah, good evening. Thank everyone for being here and those people watching us, you know, over TV. Just want to thank the PV, you know, board that's going to run the hospital. You know, you don't imagine how, what a difference is going to be to have a, finally, a community asset, a community hospital back again. So want to thank, you know, Tony Nunez for signing on, but other, other people who are in our community that are going to be board members. But other than that, thank you, man. That's all.
Okay. I'm not going to talk too much about much and nothing, because I'm just so excited to see all you guys here. My mom is going to be 99 on Thursday. She came out with me on 1/29, and we were out there yelling and screaming for you. And we had a good time, and I know all of our hopes and all of your dreams that day were pretty fantastic. So I'm so glad that you were able to represent Watsonville. So I want to say congratulations to Tony Nunez, because he usually writes about us, so maybe he can write about himself now. Yes, no, he says. But that is, it's going to be an elected position, so if you're interested in being on the healthcare district at a later time, they're going to stagger that. And in November, there will be some of those board seats up. And then, like, I think a couple of years later, there will be more board seats up. So it is a part of our community, and it wants community investment. So if you're willing to give that time and effort to help guide it, because we really want this healthcare district to work for the people of Watsonville. And it's imperative that we keep our hand in it and we invest in it. So at that time, I will conclude a report from council, and I get to do my favorite thing. We're going to do the mayor's proclamation congratulating the Watsonville High School soccer team and its coaching staff. So I'm going to meet you guys over there. You guys will go in front of the podium, right over here. Actually, you can come on. Come through here, and you're going to face that way. Like the teacher I am, I'm sorry. So taller people in back, you know how it goes. Right? So everybody can see you in that camera right up there. Done this a few times. Get ready, because you're each going to have to step forward. I like that. Yeah, we have all these, but you, tell me if I forget. So this is a proclamation. This is a proclamation for our Watsonville High School Boys Soccer Team on March 22, 2022. We wanted to recognize, the community wishes to recognize the 2021-22 Watsonville High School Boys Soccer Team and their coaches. Whereas head coach Roland Hedgepath, assistant coach David Guerrero, goalie coach Josue Silva? Yeah, not here. And head assistant coach Luis Guerrero invested countless hours working with the team. And whereas the players, tell me when I get your name if I say it wrong. Edgar Angel? David Ibarra? Isaac Vargas? Oscar Herrera? Pablo Rojas? Yahir Alcantar? Sebastian Avonce? Saul Valencia? Mateo Arias? Daniel Mada? Sergio Estevez? Jose Estevez? Brothers? Twins! Ooh, this is a specialty. I like it. Very nice. Yes, they're cute. Benny Sanchez? John Arenas? Luis Velasco Vazquez? David Estrada? Lombardo Flores? Jorge Gutierrez? Jorge Magdaleno? Sergio Jimenez? Antonio Alvarado? Jesús Vega? And Abraham Fuentes? Left it all on the field at every practice, game. And whereas the team finished first place in the Pacific Athletic League and CCS Open Division, and second in the CILF NorCal First Division, winning 17 games, with 13 of those victories coming in a row. And whereas the team's success can be attributed largely to their teamwork and willingness to sacrifice and play for each other, now therefore I, Ari Parker, mayor of the city of Watsonville and the state of California, on behalf of the city council, hereby congratulate Watsonville High School Boys Soccer Team and its coaching staff on an excellent season for their efforts to represent our team, our city, with pride in all competitions. This larger one is going to go to your coaches, and it's going to be put in Watsonville High School. So when you're old people, it'll still be hanging up there. And then we also have certificates for each one of you, and I'm going to make, draw this out, because this has been coming. And then we'll let our coaches speak to their team. Okay? So this is for Edgar Angel. If you'd step forward. Give him a hand. Edgar, this is for you. Thank you. Okay, I'll give him to him, and you step over here, and I'll move over here. Isaac Vargas? Where's Isaac? There he is. Oscar Herrera? Hi, Oscar. Pablo Rojas? There he is. He's got bling on, too. Look at you, dude. Yahir Alcantar? Yahir, congratulations. Sebastian Avonce? Congratulations, Sebastian. Saul Valencia? Go, sir, congratulations. Mateo Arias? Congratulations, Mateo. Daniel Mata? I had a Daniel Mata a long time ago. Sergio Estevez? There he is. This is one of the twins. And Jose Estevez? Wait, you're going to stand here together for just a moment? For Mom and Dad, let me get out of the way. Are they here? Aw, dude. Well, brothers are brothers. Benny Sanchez? No, it's like, okay. John Arenas? John, nice to meet you, and congratulations. Luis Velasco Vazquez? No, it's not here. David Estrada? Congratulations, sir. Lombardo Flores? Oh, look at that. Cute smile. Jorge Gutierrez? Not here. Jorge Magdaleno? Not here. What a beautiful name. Sergio Jimenez? No, it's not here. Antonio Alvarado? There you go. Congratulations, sir. Wants to shake your hand? Jesús Vega? You're so good at that, you guys. Abraham Fuentes? Ah, there he is. Last one, you can shake my hand. Thank you very much, sir. And now I'd like to invite the coaches up to speak, and their proud team will smile a lot.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for inviting us and giving us this proclamation. These, this team is, I can't believe, you know, I've been coaching, what, 50 years over there, and this team, I'll probably remember more than any other. They're a family. They work together, and that's basically why we won, you know? They have good talent. I mean, you don't go, the number-two team in all Northern California without good talent. But it takes teamwork besides that, and it takes some good coaching from my coaching staff. All of that happens. And I, and I'm going to miss this group, because they're, most of our seniors, the only other thing is. But I did want to bring up one other thing that I was looking at tonight. You know, since November, we've been practicing five days a week until last week. A minimum of, from an hour and a half to most of the time, two hours, including games. But how long that is? At least... to most of the time, two hours, including games. But how long that is? At least two hours. And I was looking over their, and how well they did in school and so forth and their GPA. Right now, there's, I think there's 16 or 17 of these that have over a three-point average. There's two that have a 3.8 and 3.9. Two that have a 4.2 and a 4.4. The reason I bring this up is that they were dedicated to soccer, but they were also dedicated to their class. So I'm going to turn it over to Luis or David, whoever wants to talk. They didn't know it.
Would you like to say something?
Muy buenas noches a todos. Este, yo soy uno de los entrenadores de aquí del equipo de los muchachos. Este año, como pudieron ver, pudimos lograr algo que no habíamos hecho anteriormente. Pero no nomás fue el logro de los muchachos y de nosotros como entrenadores, sino de la comunidad. Que este año recibimos un apoyo que no habíamos recibido anteriormente. El último partido para irnos a jugar, el partido del estado, pudimos ver qué tan unido está la comunidad con los muchachos. Gracias al Departamento de Policías que nos ayudaron a salir. Al Departamento de Policías que nos hicieron los honores de darnos una despedida hacia el partido que yo sé que los muchachos nunca olvidarán. Desafortunadamente, no nos fue muy bien en el partido, pero estamos simplemente muy orgullosos de lo que se hizo este año con los muchachos. Como decimos, muchos de ellos son del grado 12, que ya para el próximo año van a ir al colegio, universidad. Pero sabemos que aquí en Watsonville siempre hay mucho talento de fútbol y estamos con mucha esperanza de que el próximo año vamos a, esperemos llegar al mismo nivel de ir a la final otra vez en todos los partidos. Gracias.
Want to take this opportunity? Okay. I want to take this opportunity to thank the community, councilmen. It's been a really nice experience, this whole venture. It's given us the opportunity to really put Watson on the map. You know, it's, if you notice, the jerseys that the guys are wearing, it says 47 on one star and 12 on the other star. That means that we, in the 50 years that Mr. Coach Heshbit has coached, 47 of those 50 have been league championships and 12 have been CCS. So, you know, this is the second time that we go to state. Four years ago was Division Two. Luckily, this year we were able to go to Division One. So to be on the top two in Northern California means a lot. And I want, like David said, I want to really thank the whole community, the players, Mr. Heshbit, and Ms. Priscilla because I know that she's been putting a lot, supporting Mr. Heshbit with all this, you know, time that he spends. And I just wanted to thank everyone for this. This is a community effort, not just the players, but when we go out there, we represent Watsonville. So everyone should be happy for the accomplishment of this thing. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to give you the greatest photo op of your, no, not really. We're going to ask you to back up over there. And if I could have council stand up, Councilman Estrada and I will join you. And coaches, would you come over here in front? And we're going to take a picture.
Mayor, can the council say a few words? Can the council say a few words?
Yes, would anybody on council like to say a few words?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So first of all, congratulations again, you guys. So, you know, when I talk to my students, I say, you know, always dream big. And even when you're a little kid, a lot of you are probably playing soccer your whole lives. And setting lifetime goals is really important. How many of you are going to be continuing to play soccer as you go into your college or into club sport? Oh, wow, everybody almost, huh? Unless you're a junior, right? So, well, good luck with that because just, I just continue to hold on to your dreams and work hard for it. I say life isn't always easy, but if you continue to, to work for what you want, you're going to, you're going to achieve it. So, and I was so impressed with all your GPAs. That is really something to, to practice every single day and also, you know, keep up your schoolwork. And, you know, some of you are over 4.0. That's cra, that's crazy. That's good. So, good luck in your futures and never let up hope. Always keep it, keep it up. And you guys won't, you know, you're going to be moving on in your own directions come in, come June, but you guys are a family, from what I can see. And, you know, good teams, they, that's what it takes, is you all know each other very well. And that's why you got to the position you're in. So, again, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
Thank you very much, Mayor. You know, it is a special occasion here today to salute these scholar athletes. That's what we call you, scholar athletes. But remember, you didn't get here all by yourself. Your, your parents, your brothers and sisters, your schoolmates, your teachers, everybody assisted in that operation. And so find a way to get back to the community. And we say congratulations. I especially want to salute the coaches, Coach David and Hedgepath and Luis. You know, Luis was one of my former students way back when. And so he turned out pretty good. And I can't take any credit for that, but he didn't get here by himself either. And so congratulations to every one of you. Do great things.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah, I just want to tell you guys, we're so, we're all proud of you. You know, the community is very proud of you. You know, my daughter played soccer. Takes a lot of, a lot of dedication, discipline, hard work and passion. And you all, you know, good testament to that. And, you know, applaud you for your, you know, academic success, which is, it shows great strides and just great all around people that you're hopefully going to be at your age. So thank you. Thank you very much for representing us. We love you all. Thanks.
Any other council members? Like, Councilman, Councilman, sorry, Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. I too just want to echo what my colleagues have, a lot of, that's been said already. Congratulations on the, on the season. More than anything, you know, you win games at practice. And just hearing the coach here that you guys practiced two hours a day, you guys had each other's backs, you guys were working hard to make sure you kept your grades up. That's admirable, inspirational, to be honest. And so congratulations on the hard work that, you know, paid off. And just to David's point about community, you know, this is all about community. Even though many of you have never met me or met any of us, believe it or not, we're all connected. I played soccer with David when I was a youth. My brother played with Luis. Coach Heshbit, even though I went to Aptos and I was part of a long lineage of teams that couldn't beat Watsonville. The coach during my sophomore year invited me to Europe to go play a tour with the Watsonville team. And Coach Hedge and Priscilla were our parents while we were over in Spain and in Germany. When we ran out of money, when I ran out of money at the end, it was the generosity and the kindness of Hedge that got me through. And I will never forget that. They're both a reason why I'm up here, you know? And so I hope that you really value and treasure this time because, yes, it's coming to an end. My four years, I remember them fondly, but this is also a beginning for each of you. And so, you know, I really encourage you to keep working hard. I promise you, even though when things don't seem like they're pay, they're going to pay off or they're going to work out, just keep working hard. Remember the people that supported you. We will always support you. This community will always support you if you put your best foot forward. And so just to say that, again, what a season. Congratulations. And we look forward to the dominance to continue in the region. So thank you all.
Any other counsel? Like, say, okay. So I just want to say, in addition to all the other stuff, your hair is pretty cool, guys. I like it. Very well done. Thank you all for coming down here tonight. And Roland and Priscilla, I've known you forever. And, well, your forever is longer than my forever. So I've known you for a long time. And you have been amazing people. Okay. You've been amazing people to, not just your soccer players, but to our whole community and so many generations. So I just want to say thank you for all of your community service. We have one more council member, Councilwoman Kidos Carter, who would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's not much that I, that's left to say, but I just wanted to say that you are all leaders and you represent us with pride. And we are so, so proud of you all. Whatever path that you take, we will always be here for you and we will always be rooting you on. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so having congratulated our Watsonville High School Boys Soccer Team, we move on to reports to council where there is no action required. So we move on to our consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon on one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor will, that's me, will allow prior, a public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So I'll use this moment to say, now we're going back to very necessary but boring city stuff. So if you guys want to say goodbye, we won't be offended. Thank you. And I will ask for public input on our consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda you would like to comment on, please come to the podium. Okay. Seeing no public input at this time, I look to council.
Would you like to move to consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'd like to ask a question.
And now we have a question from Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes. This is regarding 8D. I'm concerned that we're approving $1.3 million for petroleum products for each of five years. My question is, and I don't know who this question goes to, but my question is, is what's being done to reduce the consumption of oil for our fleets?
All right. Mr. Drenzo?
Not much. And I'll explain why. We are on a continuous pursuit for alternative fuel vehicles, for electric vehicles. Granted, the market is quite small for municipal fleet inventory at the moment, but we're experiencing anywhere from six months to eight months lead time on vehicles. So I want to, I should note that probably the biggest lift that we could make is opening the landfill again. A quarter of that cost is attributed to solid waste vehicles. So the side loaders, front loaders, rear loaders that run down in Monterey every day, under heavy load, they generate, they utilize eight gallons a mile. So they're extremely inefficient under heavy load. Once we open the landfill again, we have a six-mile round trip. So that is probably going to be one of our easiest, granted it comes with a sunk cost as part of opening the landfill, but the ROI on that is exponentially rapid. And anywhere between four or five years, we'll start realizing, reaping the financial gains from that. As far as the rest, it is, we are vigilant and continue to look for opportunities to get hybrid vehicles and any other non-traditional internal combustion engine vehicles, but we simply aren't unable to identify, identify them in dealerships for the time being.
So in terms of cost, are there any grants or anything that could help us?
There are grants for the vehicles, yes. The, you know, the interesting part is, the grant really is, it removes the layer to the cake. The vehicle itself is 20 to 25% more expensive than a traditional vehicle, right? So we'll receive $300,000 grant from Monterey Air Resources District. And we apply that to a solid waste side loader, but that side loader costs $700,000 as opposed to $450 for a traditional one, right? So we're still making the very same investment in that vehicle, the grant notwithstanding.
Okay. Thank you. Any other clarifications from the council? All right, then we'll go to roll call.
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. We have no items removed from the consent agenda, so we will move on to new business. The appointment of Erwin Ivan Ortiz to serve as city clerk and approval of contract between the City of Watsonville and, do you want me to say your whole name, Erwin Ivan Ortiz, for employment as city clerk. And our report is from Deputy City Manager Manning.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Natalie Manning, the Deputy City Manager and HR Director, here to talk to you very briefly about the appointment of the city clerk and approval of the contract. Just to give you a little bit of background, as you all know, we recently lost our city clerk who had been serving in that position for over 13 years and with the city for over 43 years. So she is leaving very big shoes to fill. Upon her retirement date getting closer, the mayor made an appointment of a subcommittee to oversee the hiring of her replacement. That committee consists of Mayor Parker, Mayor Protem Montesino, and Councilmember Garcia. The committee worked with HR to conduct an open recruitment, so any eligible applicants were allowed to apply. And after doing an application screening and extensive interviews, the city council has determined that they would like to offer the position to Erwin Ivan Ortiz, who has been with the city clerk's office for over 10 years, serving as a deputy city clerk and assistant city clerk. And so based on his experience, education, his skill set and his knowledge of the city, the subcommittee entered into negotiations for a contract with Mr. Ortiz. A summary of that contract is as follows. It's an annual salary of $125,082 with a 2.5% cost of living increase this July. His benefits will be the same as what is offered to our executive team, including administrative leave, vacation, holidays, and sick leave. It also includes health, life, and disability insurance. His contract outlines that he will have an evaluation after the first six months and then every year after that. At the time that he does an evaluation, he may request salary adjustments or COLAs for council consideration at for council consideration at that time. And then, the contract also allows that either party can terminate the contract with or without cause with a 45-day advanced notice. And if termination is done without cause, he would be eligible for severance pay. So, with that, the council is asked to please adopt a resolution appointing Erwin Ivan Ortiz as city clerk and approving a contract between the city of Watsonville and Erwin Ivan Ortiz for employment as city clerk. And with that, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Erwin and ask if there are any questions.
Yeah, so, are there any clarifying or technical questions from council? Okay, then, at this point, we'll go to any public input.
Erwin, I would like to thank you for your kindness and patience as a person who came here seven years ago and was reluctant yet to run for office. And I ran against her, and of course, I didn't win, she did. But two years later, I ran against, I ran against an incumbent from Cabrillo and won by a significant margin. And your help and Beatrice's help were instrumental in convincing me that I could win. And even though I didn't grow up here, I didn't go to school here, and I'm not from here, I'm from Redondo Beach, California, guess what? You can win office even though you're not born and raised here because people can see that you love your city, adopt the city, which I do. And I thank you, Erwin, for being a kind, professional, genuine, authentic human being in all situations, including, I saw you sitting there, as I almost do every city council, watching you, sitting under duress. You performed flawlessly, Erwin. You're a great guy. I am so pleased the city has hired you, and I'll be still, just sitting a little behind you, all the city council meetings probably get to come as long as I'm coming to city council. So, congratulations and thank you, Erwin, for your wonderful efforts and your continued success. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to make comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. Marilena Ortiz. I come before you tonight to speak in support of Erwin's appointment to serve as city clerk. I've known Erwin for the past 13 years, and I've had the honor of being married to him for the past eight. In those 13 years, I've had the privilege of seeing him work his way up from recreation leader in the Parks and Community Services Department to his current role as the assistant city clerk. Erwin possesses many qualities that I truly admire. He is humble, respectful, funny, a hard worker, a great friend, caring son and supportive brother, an amazing husband, and the best dad to our three beautiful girls, Haley, Leila, and Sasha. The list goes on and on, so in short, I couldn't be prouder of the man he's become. If there is one quality that I really admire, it's his commitment as a public servant to the city he was born and raised in. The city clerk is expected to respond to the legislative needs of the city council and their constituents, respond to Public Records Act requests, prepare council meeting agendas, run elections, maintain the municipal code, among other essential duties of the clerk, which Erwin has experienced and has done for the past few years, serving as your deputy and assistant city clerk. Erwin is truly one of a kind and the most intelligent man I know. I don't say that just because I'm his wife, but as a colleague and as a person as well. It absolutely fills me with pride every time someone shares something Erwin assisted them with, did for them, or simply to speak about his kind character. He is a true born leader and a visionary who possesses all of the characteristics to serve in this role. Once more, I ask for your support on his appointment as I'm confident he will do an excellent job serving as the next city clerk. Before I close, I do want to deliver a quick message to Erwin from our daughters, and I quote, "We're so happy for you, can't wait to see you, and we love you, puppy." Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Hard to follow up the wife. So, I've worked for Erwin and Bee since 2017. From a perspective of an employee and being directly supervised, I can't say enough, I've said it to his wife, to him, to anybody who will listen, he's such a leader. He has all the qualities that you're looking for in a city clerk. I have no doubt he will continue the excellent work environment that Bee always, always had. Speaking with someone who has no experience coming into this role when I took it on, Erwin's always made me feel like, you can learn, you have the skill, we believe in you. You know, I can teach you, thank you. And it might seem like such a small thing that someone says thank you, but he never fails to do it at the end of every day. And, you know, in short, I fully support him, and I hope you will approve the resolution because he is extremely deserving.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Nikala Bakib, Parks and Community Services Director. And I've had the privilege to know Erwin and work with Erwin for many, many years. As his wife stated, he started his work and journey with the city of Watsonville as a recreation leader in the Parks and Community Services Department many moons ago, and has always done a stellar job. He ran our summer camp, Camp WOW, for quite some time as well. And I think the work that he did with our young people in our community and the stellar job that he did in developing young leaders, I think has transferred into the work that he's done in the city clerk's office as well. I can't think of another city employee who is as humble and intelligent and hardworking and dedicated to this community as Erwin, and I think he's a great example of how we can grow our hometown heroes here in Watsonville into executive team members that represent the city to the best extent. So, I know Bee has left some big shoes to follow, but I can't think of a better candidate than Erwin to pull them. So, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, and then I will bring it back to council for motion.
I move that we...
Next city clerk.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second from Mayor Protem Montesino.
I'd like to make a comment.
And Councilwoman Garcia.
Yeah. The subcommittee, which you know consisted of three of us on the council, interviewed five qualified candidates. But in listening to Erwin's responses to all the questions we gave, he outscored the other four by just really, really high score. And so, what it did, is the interview reflected his work ethics and his style that I have experienced as a city council member. Whenever, ever I needed any kind of assistance, Erwin was there for me. And so, I just want to say to you, Erwin, welcome as our city clerk.
And as a member of that subcommittee, I want to make an added comment that we had people that interviewed that were city clerks and had years of city clerk experience, and they could not articulate the job as well as Erwin could. And that just proves two things. Erwin was a great student, and he is now ready to become, you know, the teacher. And his teacher Bee was pretty darn awesome. So, with that combination, he was allowed to flourish. And it was eye-opening for those of us who were sitting on those interviews that he, just so far and above anybody. And I was thankful because we were all getting really stressed about Bee leaving and all the things that she does. So, we're not stressed anymore. We're very happy. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Dutra?
Thank you. I'm honored to make this motion for you, Erwin. You know, one of the things that I, has been important for me is to, as Nick just said earlier, referred to as a hometown hero, is, and moving up into being, in such instrumental positions in our community, that is very important to me. You know, this community means a lot to me, it means a lot to every one of us that's up here. To see someone like you get into this position, really, I mean, it's a really, it's a special thing. You are probably one of the kindest people I know. You're patient, you know, you deal with seven of us with quite different attitudes and could be different.
Their personalities, Jimmy, we have different personalities.
And attitudes. You know, we, you know, and I think that you really have this balance about you, and I'm really thankful you're here because sometimes, you know, it could be very difficult, this job that we're all in, and you make it that much better for us. And I want to say thank you, and I cannot wait to cast my vote.
And Councilman Hurst?
I would also thank the subcommittee, you know, these are, this is a lot of work to go all through this process. And even though Beatrice had kind of small feet, she had great big shoes to fill. And so, this is a lot of, a lot of history and a lot of work ahead of you, and we know that you're the point person for a lot of questions, and we like it that way, too.
Yes.
You know, keep the public informed, and we salute you and say congratulations, but thanks to the subcommittee and thanks to the family. When you get this kind of public comment, I think that you'll go a long way.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Estrada?
I just, I too am excited, Erwin, to be able to support this recommendation. I think that, like the youth, a little while, that we're here a little while ago, I think you've earned this position. You've worked, I've seen you work hard every day that I see you work, you're working. I've always appreciated our bond as fathers, you know, of very young children. I think it's sometimes, it was just great to be able to connect with you, to have somebody that sort of understands some of the challenges that a young father, or a young couple, or just somebody with a young child go through. And so, I've always really just appreciated that from you. And, you know, we were very fortunate to have Bee for an entire generation, and I think we're going to be even more fortunate to have you for the next generation. And so, you know, even when we're gone, Erwin, hopefully you'll still be here and you'll still be a source of steadfast, you know, steadfast sort of, you know, the keeper of democracy, the making sure everything sort of keeps going, right? And so, I'm very excited for you, I'm very happy for you. And just to thank the subcommittee for all the great work that you did. I know that these committee, that committee work's not always easy, you always have to find extra time to be able to do this, but for the pool of candidates that were great and for Erwin, I think we, you all did an exceptional job. So, congratulations, Erwin, and I'm looking forward to this, the bright future that we have in Watsonville.
Good. Any other council would like to make, Vanessa, excuse me, Councilwoman Kidos Carter?
A lot has been said about you, Erwin, that I won't repeat, but you're just so, just deal with everything with such grace and professionalism, and it's just such a joy to work with you. And I would just like to add that I sent out an email over the weekend, not too long ago, and I wasn't expecting a response. I just thought, I better send this now before I forget. And Erwin emailed me almost right away, and everything was taken care of, and it was amazing. So, I know that you are going to be on top of things as you always are. I know that you're committed, that you really are passionate about this job, and it's just amazing to work with you. So, thank you so much for all that you do.
Good. Any other council comments? All right, and before we go to vote, let's clarify that the motion, who made the motion? Councilman Dutra? That the motion is the staff recommendation?
Yes, such. Appointing Erwin Ortiz as a city clerk and approving a contract between the city of Watsonville and Erwin Ortiz for employment as city clerk.
Okay, very good. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Absolutely, yes.
Estrella?
Aye, congratulations.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
Aye.
And Parker?
Yay, yes. Si.
Thank you so much. Good evening, gentlemen.
Would you like to say something?
I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity. It's a big endeavor for me to take on. I'm happy to do it. I'm proud of my city, as you said. I was born and raised here. I worked a variety of jobs throughout my life. I worked my way through college. I attended all local schools. I attended Watsonville High School. I went to Cabrillo College. You know, I'm homegrown, I really am, and, you know, hard work pays off, it really does. I want to thank my family who's here, my sister Myra, and Carlos, and my mom, and especially my wife, who's always taking on the extra duties at home while I'm here at council meetings with my three little girls who are six, five, and two. I do what I can to keep a balance of my life. I try as much as I can to be a father, a son, a worker, a role model, you know, a good supervisor. I do what I can, and I, and I will continue to, I just committed to working with the hospital district to clerk the meetings.
Thank you.
So, I'm continuing to do things for this community, and I will continue to do them in the future. Thank you once again for the opportunity. I look forward to working with everyone, including all of our department directors over here. And thank you, Nick, for those nice comments, and everybody else who's here to support me. Thank you all.
Well, it's been a good night in our open session. Enjoyed that. Okay, we don't have any emergency items added to the agenda, and so, we will move on, and we're moving back into closed session. And thank you all for coming.
Oh, I was hoping to make a request for...
I think I went past that already.